Item number four is the public hearing to consider use permit for a property located at 6112 Manning Avenue. I'm going to ask the clerk to perform the first reading at this time.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit subject to certain conditions to operate a residential care facility on property in the low-density residential R1 district on property located at 6112 Manning Avenue.
Would anyone on the board like to share any ex parte communication they may have had on this subject? Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I personally went around to constituents in the area. It's not the first time I've done it on something of this nature to make them aware that we had the upcoming meetings. I did go door to door and knock to make people aware of it, but it will not affect my decision.
Anyone else? Mr. Mock.
Yes, I have had conversation with Raylene, but it won't affect my decision. I couldn't pronounce your last name. How do you pronounce that?
Oberlechner.
Thank you.
I'm going to call her Raylene here in a minute. I'm going to call her up.
Oh, no.
(laughing).
Ralene.
Ralene. We both missed it.
Forget it.
Our apologies, ma'am. Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on this topic. Just for information, we'll take two readings. This is the first night of that, so we have a second reading yet to come on a following night. And at this time, I'm going to ask staff to perform or introduce the application to us, please.
Ralene Oberlechner-Gimpel is the applicant and is seeking approval of a conditional use permit application to operate a residential care facility for 12 people in a home she owns located at 6112 Manning Avenue. This application originally came before the Planning Commission in 2005. During the consideration of that application, which occurred over three different Planning Commission meetings, it was determined that the city zoning regulations governing this type of use needed to be updated or revised. Therefore, the conditional use permit application was indefinitely continued at that time. Since then, the amendments have been made to the city zoning ordinance and have been adopted related to this type of use. The amendments include creation of the term residential care facility, which replaced the previous term known as a convalescent home. The term residential care facility is more consistent with the terms used by the state of Missouri for this type of use, which was a part of the confusion created at the Planning Commission meeting in 2005. In addition, performance standards for residential care facilities have been incorporated into the conditional use permit section of the zoning ordinance, which is in Section 20. The performance standards provide criteria that must be complied with if and when a residential care facility is approved. These criteria are in addition to any other standards contained or referenced in the zoning ordinance or that may otherwise be approved or incorporated as a condition of approval by the Board of Aldermen. The applicant has provided information describing how her application relates to each of these adopted standards, and that information is provided in the attached Planning and Zoning Commission staff report that you received as part of your packet for this evening. At this point, I will defer to the applicant to provide more details of their proposed application as the applicant is here, and I know they have further information to provide. Subject to that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Ralene, would you like to make your presentation?
I'm just asking you to introduce yourself. Kimran Hufar, the attorney for Guardian Angel, Ralene.
Your name again, please, sir.
Kimran Hufar.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to go over the new amended requirements for this conditional use permit and to go through each one briefly and just show how Guardian Angel satisfies them. I'll be very brief here, but the first one is that, the first requirement is that there are no more than 16 total residents at any one time. Guardian Angel only has 12. The second requirement is that the number, again, let's say, the applicant must demonstrate that it will be consistent with the following. The first one is again saying that the residents should be no more than 16. We have, Guardian Angel has 12. And the number of employees, Guardian Angel currently has three part-time staff, two full-time staff, is that?[291.12][291.12](laughing). Including the owner that works in shifts. The shifts are from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. The next requirement is that state the number of additional vendors or service providers anticipated to visit the home each day and week and month, including pharmacy deliverers, barbers, and so forth. The vendors that frequently attend Guardian Angel is, one, the pharmacy delivery, which is once a month or as needed. Then there is a medical doctor who attends once a month, four rounds. There is a psychiatrist who typically comes once a month. There's also a beautician and barber who attends to the residents, and they come as needed when the resident needs personal care. There is home health aides that also show up from time to time, but that is ordered by the doctor. There's a podiatrist who shows up once every three months. The next requirement is that we state the number of vehicle trips to and from facility. In 2005, and I don't know if you have access to this, in 2005, a traffic study was done in order to show the traffic impacts that the facility had in the neighborhood. And according, I'll just briefly sum it up, according to the traffic study, the total number of vehicle trips generated to and from the facility mirrors that of a typical detached, single-family house. The next requirement is that there is at least 500 square feet for every five residents. There, as I said before, the Guardian Angel has 12 residents with at least 1,200 square feet. The backyard is 100 feet by 54 feet, which equates to 5,400 square feet. Therefore, we exceed the minimum required. The next requirement for the license for the permit is that the rear yard be fenced with a fence of at least 60 inches. Guardian Angel currently has a fence that is six feet high or 72 inches in height. So, that requirement as well. Next requirement is that parking shall be met by off-street parking, areas not located in the front yard. Guardian Angel has a number of vendors and service providers that we've already discussed who park in the driveway or the street in front of the property. So, we meet that requirement. The next requirement is that there are no alterations or additions to be made to the dwelling that should alter the residential appearance of the facility. We have not made any alterations to the building that would alter it from looking as a residential appearance, with the exception of there is a deck that we have applied for permit for and is currently being built, and the deck is in conformity with the city zoning and building regulations. The next requirement is that there should be no traffic generated between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. in greater volumes than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. According to the 2005 traffic study, the only traffic that will be generated between those hours would be the change of staff that occurs at 11:00 p.m. The next requirement is that there is no other residential care facility located within 1,200 feet, another facility, group living home, and we are not aware of any facilities that are located within 1,200 feet of Guardian Angel. Those are the 11 requirements set forth in the amended regulations, but then the zoning staff has added an additional seven in their recommendations that they, like, comply with. I'll briefly go over them as follows. The first one is that Guardian Angel complies with all state, local, and federal laws, rules, and codes, and regulations. We are in agreeance and compliance with that recommendation. The second one is that the conditional use permit shall not be transferable beyond the initial intended end user, Ralene. And at our last meeting, we included in Guardian Angel Care Home, the facility is owned by a corporation. It's Guardian Angel Care Home Incorporated. It asked that permit be issued in the corporation's name as well. The staff agreed to that. So, as long as we can still have the permit in the corporation's name, we're in agreeance with that and in compliance with that request. The third is that although the regulation says only 16 residents can be in the facility, the staff has limited the maximum number of residents for Guardian Angel to be 12. That is the maximum number that she can have, and we're in agreeance and compliance with that recommendation. The fourth of the seven is that the Guardian Angel allow the city building inspector and fire protection marshal to inspect the house and property when deemed necessary by the city or by the fire district, and we are in agreeance with that. We have no problems with that request. The fifth request is that the copies of the results from the inspections performed from the state be provided to the city upon request. We have no problems with that request either. The sixth request is that there are no alterations to the exterior of the house, again citing what is stated in the, we have no problem with that. The last being that the deck, which has been, in the process of being built, be completed within one year of its application. We have no problem with that either. So, that sets forth the requirements for the amendments and the additional requirements set by the zoning board that they have asked us to comply with in order to have this conditional use permit granted. We're in compliance with that. We have no problems with any of those requests. We're going to comply with those in order to get this conditional use permit.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
Not this time.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant at this time by the board? Ms. Melson.
I do have a couple of questions. Has the city's building inspector or the fire marshal been and inspected the property?
Yes, they do already routinely.
They do?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And with the 12 residents, do they have to have some documentation of disability to be within the house?
Documentation of disability? I mean, yes, you just couldn't move in there without having, you either have a doctor or somebody that puts them in there.
Okay.
They have ongoing care.
Okay. That's what I want to need to know. And you did address that issue about the deck, which is going to be completed within a year's time?
Yes.
I believe you just said that. Okay. And you do have a fire sprinkler within the house?
Yes, we do, which is not even required by the state for our level of care.
Right. And the state of Missouri documents that you all have, it says in here that the facility is in good standing with each of the state entities. Is that correct?
We're licensed by the Department of Health and Senior Services and by the Department of Mental Health.
Okay. And then you are in good standing with both of those entities?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We are inspected twice a year by both of those.
Okay. That's what I thought. And then those copies are available, it says in here, that upon request by the, to the city, upon request by the city to the community development department. So, if they would request those?
At any time, and a copy of the current ones are hanging up and posted at our front door.
They are. Good. Okay.[801.06][801.06](applause) I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Mr. Van Buster.
I do have a couple of questions. How many bedrooms are in the facility?
There are six bedrooms.
Okay. And, but you do not live at the facility, is that correct?
No, I don't anymore, even though it's my childhood home, and I had lived there until, like, 2002.
Okay. Do you live out of the community or here in our community? So, the funding you get to keep the residents, does that come from the state or is it contracted to the state, or how's that work?
Well, it depends on the residents. Some are Medicaid. Most of my residents all are Medicaid, so then that money does come from the state.
So, there's no standard contractual agreement with?
No, because most of them are Medicaid, and it depends on what their Medicaid rate would be.
Do have a couple more questions. Now, the deck, that was, that's one year from the date of the application, is that the original application?
That's correct. We were given one year from the date that Ralene had applied for the building permit in order to construct the deck. We were given agreement from the zoning board was one year from the date of that application, the deck would be fully completed.
And so, it'd be completed in July of 2011, is that correct?
Well, probably before that. It's just been weather permitting. I mean, it's just been weather permitting.
But that would be the deadline.
It's, our goal is as soon as the weather clears up to get it totally finished.
Would you, would you have any problem with, I know it says that you would provide the state inspection information upon request, but would you have a problem providing that without request? In other words, every time there is a state inspection, give us a copy of that?
No, it's public knowledge. I mean, and it's, you can go to the website, the state of Missouri, and you can get, you can look at, I think, five years back now. And it's, I have no problem.
But you wouldn't have a problem providing that to the city, just bringing a copy of that to our city clerk in each instance when the inspection occurs?
No, I have no problem with it. I mean, it's not, it's not a secret. I mean, they're not.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
So, I mean, I have no problem with providing that.
I just, that way, you know, I don't know if we're aware of when the state inspections occur, so that would make us aware.
Well, they usually are now because, because they also, because now, after that, all the fires and regulations have changed in the state of Missouri since that one fire at that Anderson Group home down near Joplin, Missouri, and now we are also inspected by the state fire marshal. And so, the state fire marshal, then, also, we follow up with Matt Mason with the Raytown Fire Department. We get, I mean, we get inspected all the time. Our doors are always open to any of the fire, and then they would pass on any kind of, when we get inspected by the state, they let the fire department know that it's your time to come in now.
Now, you would, it says that you could have 16, but you're stating that you'll never have more than 12. Is that correct?
Well, I, I'm licensed for 12. I didn't know about the 16 until this, and I don't have any plans. I don't, I don't have any plans to, you know, I would have, I would have to get approval by the state.
Yeah.
You can't just say, "I'm going to put all these people here, and I'm going to put them in this room." Each room, each bud room has to be a certain amount of space, and, you know, I would, it would have to be a big deal to add more people.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions about, just talking about the amount of vendors and services that are provided that are coming there. And I noticed on a couple of those with the beautician and barber as needed, it says that staff has asked for historical information for this type of service provider, but has not yet received the information. Have they received that as of yet?
Well, we talked about it last time, and yes, and we don't have now an outside, actually, one of my CNAs, one of my nursing staff is also a licensed beautician. So, we killed two birds with one stone with her, because if she's in the facility and someone needs an actual haircut, she will do it for them. And we've had that for a while, so we haven't had to have somebody actually come in and actually cut all of their hair. A lot of them, it's a special treat to take them out into, you know, the community, and they get their hair done at a beauty shop or something. But if, if there couldn't be, you know, we wanted to disclose everything that we had maybe come, and if somebody didn't have a family member or some way to get out to get a haircut or needed their hair fixed, we would offer that. We would call somebody in.
One thing, one other thing I noticed under home health aides and therapist, it actually is ordered by physician, but then it says staff has asked for historical information for this type of service provider.
We discussed that one, too. The, the only reason we'd have a home health aide would be just like if you or a family member went to the hospital and they discharged you, and the doctor ordered you to have some physical therapy at your house or just for strength training. And so, the doctor would make that order. It's not something that I do. I just say, you know, some of my residents are elderly, they're not here tonight. Some of my residents are here to represent themselves, but some of my residents are elderly and with flu or whatever that'll knock them out. And if they go to the hospital for a week or two at a time, they're too, when they come back after being in bed, they need some physical therapy.
Sure. Have you provided that historical information, though, to staff that they requested? That's my question.
We discussed it at the last meeting. Yeah, I mean, I don't, we don't, I mean, I don't know, and I, I don't know when that, I mean, I can't tell you when that's going to be. I mean, we don't know.
Well, we don't know for the future, but the past, certainly, you would know how often that has occurred, and that's what they're asking for, I guess, is the history of it.
If that's something that's needed, we can definitely work on.
Okay. I might ask, staff, are you satisfied with what's been provided?
Yeah, we weren't so much, as you just stated, we weren't wanting them to estimate in the future as much as, they've been in operation since 1996, so they, kind of, what historically in the last 14 years or 15 years, how often does that occur? And recognizing that's an average and what has happened in the past, particularly with having to go to a doctor or someone getting ill, made, doesn't necessarily mean that that exact same average will occur in the future, but it gives us a guide. But some of the historical information that?
Maybe twice a year, maybe two times a year we'll have home health.
Okay. Some of the other information that you've asked about and historical information that was listed in the staff report to the Planning Commission, as Ralene has talked about, they did, that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, and that staff report informed, I didn't update it to include that information that was provided at the Planning Commission, but.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple more quick questions, excuse me. So, how many, how many staff people do you normally have there at one, at any particular time? Would it be about one person?
Usually one. I mean, we're only required by the state to have one per 40 residents. So, and there's usually more than one of us there at any given time, but I'm, we're required to have one.
And you were talking about the, the age of some of the residents. What, what is the variation in age?
I have them from 18 to 89.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? Mr. Kramer.
On one of the conditions is about the deck, and I know that on the permit, it allows for 365 days to complete the deck. I drove by, and the only progress I saw in the deck was actual post holes dug in the ground from the street. I didn't walk up onto the property. But are you going to have a contractor take care of this deck, or is this something that you guys are going to do?
Well, we actually have pictures of the deck. If we could, we could provide to you, that Ralene's taken.
Right.
That are within the mound.
Okay. So, but, but is it going to be a contractor that's going to complete this, or is this something you guys are just doing on your own, or how's that work?
It's something that my husband is doing.
Okay. Now, the other question, and I may direct it to staff, as far as ADA accessibility, is there any requirements by the state for ADA accessibility?
I don't know. I'd have to defer to the state to answer that. As far as our building code, I'd have to check with our building inspector, and I can visit with him and bring that information back to your next meeting.
Well, I would be kind of curious, because, you know, we want to maintain the aesthetic appearance of the neighborhood, of course.
It's not going to, we don't have wheelchairs.
Right.
And so, it's not, I mean, it's, we're not like going to be specifically an ADA deck. We're just widening it so that you can get stretchers in and out easier by, if requested by our fire department.
Right. Well, I'd.
And there are platforms down, there is more than just posts done.
One thing, our building official, Andy Boyd, and myself, actually, they contacted us before they started constructing the deck, just to find out how far out from the house they could come to comply with setback requirements and other building code issues. We met with them on site, so, about the design and all that. So, the building inspector was aware of the deck being built before they started construction. At the Planning Commission meeting, I mistakenly made a statement that a building permit was issued for that deck. That was incorrect. It was, a building permit's not required for that deck because it's, the floor is not 30 inches or higher above grade level, so the building code does not require a building permit. But the condition number seven, which relates to the deck being completed by July 1, 2011, it was around July, at the Planning Commission meeting, that whole conversation was discussed at the start of that construction was around July of this year. So, we just, we, following the discussion from the Planning Commission or direction from the Planning Commission, we just continued that one year to July 1 of this year. So, it, the intent of the, of that condition meets the intent of, if a building permit had been issued, gave them one year to basically finish it. But just to clarify that point, there was not a building permit issued because it was not required. But again, the, in regards to the handicap accessibility, the building official is aware of the deck construction, and we would have discussed that if that had been required for handicap accessibility.
Right. Well, and I'm just curious with this type of facility, because if we're going to grant a conditional use permit, you know, I want to make sure that they're in compliance with what's federally mandated and state mandated.
I'm sure it complies with our building code and fire codes, because our building official and the fire marshal have been on, have visited the site on, not just for the deck, but for other purposes.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I got.
Mr. Hamilton.
I think I understood you to say something about if this conditional use permit is granted, it may be transferred to someone.
Actually, it should not be, it's, one of the conditions is that it's not transferable.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood, because typically, they are not transferable.
That's correct. It should not be transferable, but in the original report, it said that it would be granted to only Ralene, but in fact, Ralene does not actually own the business. The business is owned by a corporation. That corporation is Guardian Angel Care Home Incorporated. So, we just asked that the corporation's name be included on the permit, because the corporation, in fact, owns the business. But other than that, it would not be transferable.
Okay. And staff is comfortable with?
Yes. Well, we will, between this meeting and your next meeting, we'll make an amendment or change to the ordinance that's before you to include that, the name, Guardian Angel Care Home Incorporated.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions at this time, I'm going to, I'm going to thank you, and then I'm going to ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. And first up would be Mary Racy, please.
And like we did for the last meeting, my residents asked that I stand with them or walk them up here because they're a little uncomfortable.
That's fine. Sure. Welcome.
My name is Mary Racy. I live at Guardian Angels. I lived there for 10 years, and I have a lot of loving friends that live there in my home. I have real good loving care staff there, and I want to stay there because that's my loving, sweet home. And I do work, but I do not bother anybody in the neighborhood, and neither does the people I live with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan O'Malley, please.
Hello, my name's Ryan O'Malley. I live at Guardian Angel. I've probably lived there, like, going on six years. We came up here five years ago, I guess, and did this whole thing, and like I say, a lot of these people, they don't have, like, family where they can go. They really don't have no place to go, so please don't close down our home.
Ryan's parents are here if they could go next instead.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Lucy O'Malley. I'm Ryan's mother. Ryan's been disabled since he's been 14 years old, and so, we have had a lot, a lot of problems trying to find someplace for him to live. And we are so grateful for finding Guardian Angel that you just cannot imagine, it's a Godsend to us. We both work, and we cannot stay home with him, and he definitely needs some additional help that we can't give him. Guardian Angel gives that to him. So, please, take that into consideration. These people, they're a family. They are, they consider each other brothers and sisters, and I just would hate to have something happen where they would have to be broken up. It just, it just would be a terrible disgrace. It really would. Because Ralene has done nothing but help these people, and she's taken my son, and she treats him like her son. And if I felt uncomfortable in any kind of situation with my son, he would not be there. I trust Ralene with, with my son, so that's, that's saying a lot, because I've been through plenty with my son. It's really hard having a disabled son and not knowing, you know, what's going to happen next and who's going to help take care of him. So, I, I just thank God for her. So, please, help them.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. O'Malley.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tim O'Malley. I'm Ryan's father, and I'd just like to state that, like his mother said, starting at about 14, we discovered that he had bipolar disorder, and he's been in and out of Western Missouri Mental Health, KU Med Center, the University of Missouri at Columbia. He's been in and out of drug rehab and stuff, and he made his mother and my life a living hell for well over 10 years or whatever. He, he dropped out of school, basically, as about a seventh or an eighth grader, and you always think that, you know, that there's some organization out there, some government agency that'll help you, but you know what? Once, once you turn 18. Once you turn 18 years old and stuff, you're on your own, there is nobody to help you anywhere with anything and stuff. And it took a long time. My wife is his legal guardian. We had to go to court, and like I say, she's his legal guardian now. There is not a whole lot of facilities that take care of people like our son and the other folks that live there, you know, they are mentally disabled or, and all. And like I say, we, it was a godsend when we found out about Rauline and Guardian Angel and everything, and he's, like you said, he's been there for six years now, and if you would have seen him 10 years ago in the way that he is right now, you, you know, it's night and day as to the way that he acts and the things that he does, and, you know, he's, and like I say, we just, it's a really good place for him, and he loves living there, and that's the first time that any place he's ever, ever cared about, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mike Perkins, please.
My name is Michael Perkins, and I love, live in that Guardian Angel, and I hope that no one will take me out of it, because it's my favorite place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Alarice Wilson, and again, I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Hi, my name is Wilson, I like standing, I'm at the group home with him, that's my home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And her sister is here, if she could come now to follow her, Helen and her husband.
My name is Cliff Tellis. My wife, Helen, she's a little microphone shy. But for us, this is very important. Number one, we have more than one family member that's affected with disability. And I was born and raised in Kansas City, and my wife was born and raised in St. Louis. We have spent many, many hours traveling back and forth, check on Alarice and other member of the family, Patrick. It come down to us to provide the care for them. As stated earlier, it's very difficult when you have to work, and you have two relatives that cannot fend for themselves, and you try to find suitable home for them. And Guardian Angels met that need for us. Alarice, while she was in St. Louis, it's in a home, turned out to be a not-so-good place for her, to use on many levels. We had no choice but to bring her here to Kansas City with us, along with Patrick, so we could adequately care, because Helen's mother and father had passed, and the bulk of it fell on us. Guardian Angels, it's been a godsend. I have never had a, just a night's sleep worrying about what conditions are there. At any time, the door is open for us to go in, inspect, comment, voice our concerns, and I don't have any negatives. And believe me, I like not having negatives, because we've had a lot of negatives in the past before we were able to bring her up here. I just wish there was more Guardian Angels. There are a lot of places. Fortunately for me, now I'm retired, I worked for a service organization called the Community of the Good Shepherd. Some of you may have heard about that. It's on the same plateau. There for those folks that need that additional assistance that we, their family members, relatives, are not able to provide. So please keep in mind and be very mindful, these people, not just these people, human beings, they're a part of our society. They just have a developmental disability that sets them apart. They go to work every morning. In fact, most employers will tell you, their absentee rate is very low, they're very dedicated. And I just wish everybody had an opportunity to act, to see human being, considerate, thoughtful. But, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You've got Charles Bowland, is it? Boyland, excuse me.
Hi, my name is Charles Bowland, and, oh, I lived at Guardian Angel for about eight years, and my two daughters, well, my dad and my mom are passed away, and my two sisters, two old sisters are married and live out of state, and my mom, she wanted me to live at a nursing home, or a RCF, and she wanted me to live at Guardian Angels, so I lived there about eight years or so, and it's, so here's where I live at, and then they're asking me if I could go shopping, and go wherever I want to, then they could, then they could say yes, and, you know, I was kind of surprised, and, man, I was, I was surprised, and, well, I just got to thank, thanks them, then, they're real nice, and, well, thank you, then.
Thank you, sir. Chris Duvall, hopefully, did I get that right? All right.
Good night, or good evening. My name is Chris Duvall. I've lived at Guardian Angel now two months. I had nowhere else to go. I was living with friends down in Texas, and I came here through them, and they found this place, and I love these people. They're like my family. We don't harm anybody, we don't conversate with anybody, we're just loving, faithful people here that, you know, we want to live there. Please don't close us down. We're great people. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Beverly Parker, please.
Hi, I'm Beverly Parker, and I'm the administrative assistant at Guardian Angel. I would like to invite you guys to come to our house at any time. It's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I have staff there, and we have a work bus that comes at 6:45 in the morning and picks up three of our workers. I have a school bus that comes at 6:30 in the morning and takes one of my people to school. He's a senior at Raytown. Traffic is nothing at nighttime, other than if we have an ambulance that comes and takes my people out. We have no one in a wheelchair. We have one gentleman that's in a walker. There's, we just don't have any trouble. We're, you know, we don't go out into the neighborhood or create any problems. We go walking, we do. If you see me with my residents at the store, wherever, when we go out to eat or whatever else, you would never know that any of them are disabled. They're just as normal as most of you. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Jamar Turner, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamar Turner, and I've been in Guardian Angels for about almost five months now, and I have nowhere else to go. I just hope you don't close us down, because I really love it there. I love everybody there, like my family, and right now, I have no other family, so I got them to depend on.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Stephanie Curtis, is it?
Hello, I'm Stephanie Curtis, and yesterday, I came across a man who was homeless, and it just reminded me about how that was with, or how I went through that too a couple of years ago. It took me, it took me a little bit, a little while to find Rauline, but I finally found her, and she really, she gives me a home, and I get food in my stomach. I got everything I needed, Rauline.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. Next we've got, is it Wayne? I'm sorry, sorry, I can't, what's the last name?
G A T T, Mount Scott.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Wayne, Wayne, excuse me, Wayne God. I live at 9054 East 61st Street. I've lived in a neighborhood 35 years, probably. Be truthful with you, I don't know how long Guardian Angels has been there, I've not noticed a bit of trouble in the neighborhood, and I guess that's the point I wanted to make here. I've been in the house one time for a spaghetti dinner with the folks, and they're great, they're great people, and I surely don't mind them being in my neighborhood. The traffic problem, I don't think is any more normal, about as normal as any other house. If a person had two or three teenagers, the traffic would be a lot worse than that house than what's going on there. I guess I'd just simply say, it's nice to have them in the neighborhood. It keeps you mindful of how lucky you are to be, to be of, being able to live on your own and live in a neighborhood, and I think they deserve the same right, just if not there, where.
Thank you, sir. Then we've got Wendy Sealbinder, is that right? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Wendy Sealbinder, and you might wonder what my relationship is with all of these people. And my relationship is that all of these people are my friends, first, and second, I organize and direct a program for the students, and I call them residents or friends, for them on the weekends, with, providing them with recreational and educational activities. And I'm here on behalf of the Guardian Angel and Rauline, because I work with a lot of group homes and residential facilities for people with disabilities throughout the county. And in working with these directors and managers of group homes, I can tell you that the Guardian Angel is at the top of the list for quality care. Rauline has always been professional, polite, and cooperative about making arrangements for the residents to further their learning outside of work. Above all, Rauline really cares about the residents as people, which is not always true in the other settings that I visit. She has a warm personality and treats the residents with respect and dignity. Her entire family, her husband and her three children, have embraced the residents into their hearts and their family to retain and improve the quality of life of the residents. I'm aware of some of the accusations of one of the neighbors about the residents, and I would strongly urge you to investigate carefully if those accusations are correct, if there is evidence about these accusations. I would be proud to have them as a neighbor in my neighborhood. I would have no problem at all if I lived next door. It's important that no single neighbor destroy the reputation of an individual such as Rauline, because there are very few home managers like Rauline. Do not make a decision hastily. I would encourage you, if you have not visited the home, to get to know the residents on a more personal basis before you make a decision about the zoning. And I am one of those people who drops in unexpectedly. Sometimes I go there to help them make out schedules for their Saturday classes, but sometimes I just go there, and I'm always welcome to just walk in and have a cup of coffee or a cup of tea with the residents, and they're just happy to see me. And this is just me going in as a friend, just like you would welcome a neighbor into your kitchen. And again, the people with disabilities have the right to live in a nice neighborhood, just like we all do, and they are a part of our community. No matter what their disability, they are a part of our community, and I would encourage you to change the zoning, if that is what is necessary, to keep, allow them to keep their home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that completes the list that I've got. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this matter at this time?
And again, after hearing these people speak, I'm about to change my mind on what I was going to say, but it's a person who has the complaint against the home, who doesn't want them in the neighborhood here to speak, addresses her concerns?
We'll give them that opportunity, Andy, if they want to.
Kind of like you hear them first, but, what I'm thinking of here is, I've heard of the Guardian Angels Motorcycle Club, which was on Darla J's show on KMBC. Is this the same group, or is this a private company? Different company. Okay. No problem either way. I was just curious about that, and I'm wondering, what is the urgency of getting the porch put in in one year? I've been remodeling the house, it's been two years. What is the urgency here? Apparently, there's some urgency, but-
Are there other questions you have, Andy, and then I'll go to staff with them.
Okay, and these people seem to be functioning well and getting along together, and I think that they should be able to do so in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Staff, regarding Mr. Whitman's question, is there, what is the urgency, or why is the one-year clause put in there, please?
The one-year was discussed by the planning commission, and it's based on that if, if and when a building permit is applied for or obtained, for whether it's a deck or any project, it's valid for one year to complete the project, and so it was just following that same rationale from the building code to apply it to this deck.
Standard operating-
Standard operating procedure. Correct. It's also, I think from the planning commission standpoint, and some of the comments specific to the deck and questions at the planning commission meeting that related to an appearance issue in the neighborhood that, once, because the deck is visible from the street, that you can see it's under construction, I don't know about today where, when there's snow out, but you can generally drive down the street and you see a deck that's partially built and not completed, and it's just, it takes away from the appearance of the residential neighborhood. It was some of the comments, or a few of the comments at the planning commission meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Are there other, anyone else in the audience, excuse me, one last time for public comments on this subject?
We just want to address one additional issue that was brought up at the zoning board. Someone had recently stated, I believe it was a neighbor, that said that the facility is drastically bringing down the values of homes around the facility, and so what we had, what we had done is, careful, Rauline, we had, Rauline had gone to the city and asked them to pull the property values of, you can see here, six properties around the facility, including the facility, the facility is 6112 Manning, the top, and we just made a really quick chart to show you that, that, the neighbor's claim is in fact false, and that this goes back to 2000, but the facility's been there since 1996, that, as you can see, from 2000 to 2008, property values increased, instead of decreased, increased, and then there's a drop, of course, from 2008, 2009, when the economy was hit, but before that, before the economy had taken a toll, you can see that property values slowly increased. The hard numbers are above, if you want to take a look at that, but I think the graph speaks for itself. Again, 6112 Manning is the facility itself, and then there are, we just took a random sampling of five other addresses around the facility. These numbers were taken from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, anyone else at this time? And there will be, there will be another time, this, I'm sure that the- time, this, I'm sure that the, reasonably confident the board will extend this to a date certain of February first. So, we would hear this again on February first. I'm going to move past the public hearing or public comments at this time, and ask staff if they have anything else to add.
A few things, based on some of the questions and discussion tonight. In regard, it was mentioned that they have a fire sprinkler system that has been installed. That is, which is correct statement. I spoke with the Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Matt Mace about that. He, they do, they did install it. It was inspected when it was installed. And also, the fire district, under their adopted fire code, inspects all fire sprinklers, including this one, on an annual basis, to make sure that it's operating properly, and that it's maintained correctly, so that it's in good working, or continues to be in good working order. And he said that the system, and the last inspection, was approved. The limit of twelve residents versus sixteen is allowed in the section twenty. The reason twelve was, is recommended as a condition is that's the number of residents they have. Their application specifies twelve. They do not specify sixteen, so we're just following up on that. They do have the option, if they want to increase beyond twelve at some point in the future, they can always come back and apply to amend the conditional use permit for, to allow for more residents at that point. But, their application at this time is just for twelve residents. So, that's the reason, or the basis for that condition of approval. The state license, we did, they did provide us with copies of their most recent state inspections, and the facility is in good standing with the state of Missouri Mental Health, as well as the Department of Health and Senior Services. And in regards to the state versus the city, just a point of clarification, the, the application before you tonight is a conditional use permit, as you all know. It deals with the land use aspect of, the use of the land at this given area of Raytown, not the operational side or the internal operations of the facility. That's where the state of Missouri comes in. They don't regulate where a residential care facility should or should not be allowed. They regulate to make sure that it's operated properly and within state requirements, just like we operate. The zoning ordinance regulates the land use, but not the operational side of the facility. So, just, I think you're all on the same line of thought. I just want to make sure that there wasn't any confusion in that regard. So, that's all I have, unless there's any questions I can answer for you.
Okay, very good. We're gonna move to board discussion. I would include questions of staff.
I would make a motion to move this to a date certain of February first.
Second.
Ms. White has the motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain of February first, seconded by Ms. Melson. Discussion on the motion. No discussion? Call of vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Meniskert?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for your patience, and we'll be back with this.